Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, October 17, 2016. It is now 8:31. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Selectmen -- Kelly to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Garrett. Before we begin with Item 2, which is public forum, I have two items to add to the agenda. One is the sign placement. I'd like to add that to 8 dot 2. Do I have a motion, please?
No move, second.
And the other item is proclamation, which is 12 dot 1. Do I have a motion, please?
No move, second.
I didn't take a vote on either one of them, so I'll take a vote for both of them now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Item 2, public forum. Anybody wishing to address the Board on any agenda item limited to three minutes? Okay, see none, we'll move along. Item 3, approval of the minutes, minutes of October 4, 2016, which was a regular meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
No move, second.
Any additions or corrections? Okay. See none, I'll call for the approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. Not here.
We're affirmative, one extension. Thank you. Okay. Item 4, Finance Department, Linda Saviski. 4 dot 1, received a monthly report from the Finance Department.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Go ahead.
Start with revenue?
Well, there's -- I'm actually here for two things, so we'll do that one last. Yeah, we have -- we're at the end of the first quarter. The number -- the numbers, the reports are looking actually pretty good for the quarter. Remember, the taxes are collected in twice, 50 percent each, and she's ahead of where I think she would normally be. The other thing is, we will be getting a big state grant at the end of the month. That's when the ECS payment comes in. So, a part of that money comes in at the end of the month. Expenditures should be -- look like they're on target as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions on revenue, gentlemen? I just have one. There was, compared to last year, the first quarter, we're slightly behind, just a timing issue.
Oh, the -- I haven't had a chance to talk to him. I'm going to talk to him today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Herman, Joe?
Generally, for total town.
Okay.
Which I pointed out, there was a slight difference in tax collection, was a little bit lower than last year at this point. Okay. All right, see none, we'll move on to expenses. Any questions on expenses? No one? Okay. Good. Okay, thank you.
The other item is, and I think we discussed this at the last meeting, two meetings ago, right after Sheila left, that we changed the signature authority. We basically removed the Finance Director's name off the list and authorized two Selectmen to sign. Well, Mary Jane starts a week from today, so this is the resolution adding her now to the list of approved signers and going back to the way we normally do business, which is the two Selectmen, and the Director of Finance will now be signers. So, this resolution accomplishes that.
Mary Jane does start a week from today.
Right.
October 24.
So, as it stands now, it's two Selectmen?
That is correct.
So, the fact that we changed this, I mean, does this effectively become effective next Monday?
Next Monday, yeah.
Because you don't want it effective today, because then you're without the ability to sign for a while.
No, no, no.
You don't have a Finance Director right now.
No, the previous stays in effect until we get all these signatures to the proper banks. It takes a little while to get all the paperwork filled out.
Okay. I would move that we approve the signature resolutions as presented to become effective next Monday.
Second.
Okay. Is there any -- is a motion on tables? Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I did see a medical report in the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I --
I'm sorry?
The medical --
Oh, because we don't have the information yet. We get the information from Anthem, and we have not gotten all of what we need. It's not a surprise. It's all about how the calendar falls, and because there was a holiday last Monday, we checked again on Friday, and we still haven't received what we needed.
No surprises to the best of our knowledge at this point.
I'm sorry?
No surprises.
No, it's actually kind of early to --
Okay. The only item I will -- there's two items I will mention, why don't you stay a second?
Oh, okay.
Is that Anthem was in the contract discussions with Yale Medical Group, which is one of the largest medical group on the shoreline, and particularly for our employees. And at the 11th hour, they did come to a settlement, which we're all grateful for. So, that was good news for our employees. First item business. Second, you think you've all received a copy of Finch rating and the press release that we put out. Of course, it's good news, so nobody picks it up. Wonderful media. Okay. And if you hadn't received the official report from Finch, please let us know, we'll send it out to you again. This was not requested by the town. Right, who?
Yeah, we had a couple of previous issues that the town has sold had a Finch rating, and under their rules, once you have a rating from them, they have to do a surveillance process on a regular basis. So, we received notification of the surveillance about, I'd say, within the last 30 days, and we've confirmed two or three times there actually was a cost to us, whereas when we go to sell bonds and we go to the rating agencies, there is a cost at that time. So, we're, I mean, you should be quite pleased. This is a great report, and it's an increase in rating for the town.
It raised us from an AA plus to triple A. So, now it confirms what Stan and Paul has said for the last year and a half. So, we're pleased about that, and everybody should be congratulated on that. Good. Anything else?
So, this is my last meeting, so thank you all for being --
Thank you. Thank you.
Linda has been a tremendous help to the town and certainly to Selectmen's office. I think you'll recognize that.
Yeah, I mean, it's reports have been seamless, so obviously, you know, everything is --
I appreciate that.
And we're keeping her card rolling. See you tonight, Linda. Thank you. Okay. Item 5, Parks and Recreation Director, Rick Maynor. Considered to take possible action to purchase a Ventrack 4500 multi-purpose utility vehicle, tractor with cabs, snow thrower, V plow, drop spreader off the State Contract 13PSX 0321 from Ventrack Products in the amount of $38,198.64. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, I don't know why I don't give round, but that's what it is. So, this is to replace the old ATV that we've had since, I think, 1999, I believe. And we use that, what we use this for is plowing the sidewalks with the snow blower. We looked at a couple other types of vehicles, and some of them were too wide for our sidewalks. Our sidewalks are five feet. We looked at a Toro, and that one actually was around, more closer to $60,000. We looked at a, into the Bobcat, that was also more expensive. This machine, though, in the future, we can get up to 30 different attachments for it, which we might purchase over time, you know, like edgers and for sidewalks, edging, edges of sidewalks, aerobators, brush hogs, and there's a lot of attachments you can get with this vehicle. So, it really is a utility, multi-use machine that we can expand on in the future. And so, the main purpose, though, for now, is the snow removal. That's the attachments we're getting now, the V plow, the snow blower, and a broom, for broom ruffle if you have small amounts of snow, and the, I'm sorry, not a broom, but the spreader on the back for spreading sand and salt. So, it'll help us be able to do over two miles of town sidewalks, so it'll be a big help for our guys in the winter.
What was the budgeted amount?
We have budgeted for the utility vehicles 30,000, but we also had 8,500 for a walk-behind mower, which we had already purchased last year, so we have that, those funds available this year. So, we have 38,500. This is less than that.
Rick, did you have Public Works, you can sell the Public Works on this equipment?
We did.
Because I know, no one on, I don't mean to, oh, no disrespect to anybody on the Public, on the Park and Rec Commission, but they're not versed in equipment.
Right.
Like Public Works is.
Mm-hmm.
So, did you run this by Public Works?
We did. Ralph Casey came over. We had, we brought the machine in.
Yeah.
We tried it out. We had it in our, you know, our garage, and the guys drove around the parking lot there. Excuse me. And Ralph Casey came over to look at it from a maintenance perspective, wanted to make sure it was not something that would be a challenge for him to maintain. He thought it was a good machine. He said it was a good motor. Can't remember what the time they had, it's Kawasaki or, I can't remember, but he said it's a good, the motor's a good motor, and the machine was not something that he saw would be something difficult for them to maintain. Madison has one. They've been very happy with it. Our guys went over there, looked at it, talked to their guys about it, asked any issues, problems they've had with it. And then we had the salesman come and bring one, and the guys got a chance to try it out.
All right, now, is this a, is this a walk-behind or this is a --
It's a ride-on. Actually, you know what? I'm sorry, I should have made a copy and should have got a picture.
Yeah, that would have been helpful if you had that for us.
Yeah, yeah, I can show you. And I think they list a lot of different attachments, the options and things in there, too.
This would be capable of handling the parking lots, do you?
Eh, it's small for parking lots. I guess, I mean, we could use it there. Mainly it's to be for the sidewalks, though. You know, because it's about five feet wide. And one thing we don't have now, we'd like the V plow, the V blade, you can actually straighten out and make a straight blade, or you can bend it and have it a V plow. The V, we think, would be very helpful in the sidewalks. A lot of times, especially when we have fairly deep snow, at some point, you can't push it anymore, because it's just, you're just pushing the pile. But if it's a V, it's pushing it off to the side.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And this can be used on the green?
Yes.
Without damaging the green?
No, it's the proper width, it'll be okay on the side. You mean for the sidewalks for the green?
Yes.
Yes.
Not the grass.
Yeah, yeah. Although, you know, in the future, if you want to get a mower attachment, we could do that, too, and we'd be able to use that for mowing.
No, no, I'm talking about snow plow at this point.
Yes, yeah. And that's what we were looking at. Some of the other ones were too wide.
Okay.
And this works with the sidewalks that we have.
What is your lead time on this? Should we approve it today?
Yeah, I think, well, we want it for this winter. I think that we'd be able to get it by January at least. That'd be our goal, have it for this winter.
Okay. What would you do with the present piece of equipment you're using?
Well, the ATV, I think eventually we'll put it up for, whatever we do, auction, I guess. You know, again, we've had this since 1999. The other thing we would use this for in the summer, the ATV, we also, when we were grooming the synthetic turf field, we have like a brush machi, it's a big broom that you basically, and it raises the fibers back up. We were doing that with the ATV, we'd be able to do that with this machine. The weight of it is not, wouldn't damage the synthetic turf.
Okay. The equipment that you now attach to the ATV, can it also be attached to this new machine?
Yes. Yeah. It would have a, excuse me, place where we could, again, the broom attachment that we do for the ATV, we could attach it on this for the turf. We also have a 200 gallon tank sprayer that, some of the years where we don't have water, if we had to put some sod down, we have to water that sod, we put our 200 gallon tank sprayer in the back of the ATV. We'd be able to do that with this, too.
I remember, I hate to bring this up, a couple of years back, there was some equipment, a piece of equipment that was ordered that couldn't be used by anything we had in the garage.
We were very careful to make sure what we get is usable.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, regardless of what we have in our fleet, can be accommodated to fit this equipment?
Yes.
Vice versa.
And plus, as I said, there are other attachments, things we don't have now that we could get that would work with this.
Yeah, but that means spending money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But if we have usable accessories, in good shape, can we use them on this new piece of equipment?
Anything that we can use on the ATV, we'd be able to use on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I would suggest that before we dispose of the ATV, assuming you're not going to do it till you get this, you might want to talk to Natural Resources for some of their carrying of stuff into the woods or whatever. An occasional use ATV might come in handy.
Yeah, I think it might still work for something like that, but for, you know, plowing the snow.
Yours is heavy duty. Yours is just, you know, transporting some tools and sign stuff. We treat it like any other vehicle that comes offline. We offer it to other departments that might be able to use it, similar to police cars and that sort of thing. Okay.
I would move the approval of the Ventrack 4500 multi-purpose vehicle for $38,198.64.
Second.
Motion is on the tables, and second it. Any further discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you very much.
So, I would suggest that you start the process purchasing that, so we can use it.
Yeah.
Today's October 17.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
I hate to think what's coming, but that's reality. Okay. Item 6, Town Engineer Jim Portley and Town Planner George Crowe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
He was four steps behind me, but he moves slow.
He must be really slow. You've been sitting there for five minutes.
No, he's doing something.
Okay. Receive presentation on town-wide sidewalk plan, but I think you mean path.
Yeah, and this is really good, back to, everybody had copied this, these maps that were made for the 2002 transportation plan.
I think we have, you know, this is different. Oh, we got this one, too. Okay. All right. Thank you.
These were existing and proposed sidewalks in Guilford Town Center back then. This was prepared in June of 2002. And what this transportation plan did, beside other things, it talked about, you know, roads and long-term planning, it highlighted in a section four, actually, section five, sidewalks and pathways, pedestrian and bicycle. Back then, it was identified that there were needs for, not only expansion of the existing sidewalk system that we have, but extension of that sidewalk system and/or pathways into little, outside the reaches of what we called the town center. There was talk of a pathway between the high school and the Adams School. There's a pathway going up to Baldwin, and just a general, an idea that there ought to be alternates to just driving from point A to point B. And there was, this here listed a bunch of streets. We have, as, matter of fact, as part of our ongoing program, we've installed the sidewalk, as you all well know, all along River Street now. We filled a lot of the gaps on Route 1 that, where there were, back in 2002, there were gaps. Now, it's almost entirely on the south side of Route 1, is the sidewalks almost entirely all the way through, except for one or two minor properties that haven't been redeveloped. Although, one section right next to the Big Y, where they're putting the medical buildings, that will be extended through. So, it'll be, as we go, these projects will be, there'll be fill-ins on the existing system. But this is also identified, and it's just so happens that there's a sidewalk going up on State Street that goes, went part of the way. We extended that sidewalk up to the senior citizens, was it Seacham's Hollow? That was, was extended as, was part of that project. And the idea then was to continue that on as part of this, this request that people had for the extension of a sidewalk up to now Plains Road West, the Tupelo area. We had that, we had the petition from the people who live along State Street. So, it's not a new concept of sidewalk extension, but I would like to highlight as part of this plan, there was the extension of the sidewalk from, along the, along Route 1, all the way out to the Madison Line. That, then, it's shown up in yellow on the plans they gave you. That's, it's about 3,700 feet that goes right from the intersection of Route 1 and Boston Street to the Madison Line that was part of that plan. There's also a gap in between of about 2,000 feet, which would be the extension of the sidewalk on Boston Street over to the intersection of Route 1 and Boston. So, there's gaps that need to be filled in as part of our ongoing program. But I think what I would like to highlight is that, actually, the Shoreline Greenway Trail, that's why it was so acceptable to the town from a first-phase point of view on that, on the Shoreline Greenway Trail, that it would fill in 3,700 feet of what was identified back in 2002 as a need, or something we would like to have in the sidewalk system. There is also sidewalks that were proposed to extend out along the west side of, from center out, along Route 1, out towards Bishop's, out in that area. And some of those have been done as well, but not very much, to be honest about it. So, there's been something that, again, since 2002, we've talked about doing a lot of work with sidewalks, because it's something that we find as, as time goes by. We have constantly requests for people to ask for sidewalk, sidewalk stations. We have the group up at Guilford Lakes that want to go from Coventry over to the Guilford Lakes School. And I've had several requests for people, actually, on certain sections are going west from the, from River Street out towards River Colony, that area. So, that, it's, again, it's something that, as people have identified as something as a need, they would like to be able to get out and walk around. If you'd like to talk about sidewalks.
All right, I missed the, your intro. I'm sure it was very entertaining and appropriate.
Yeah.
I think that a couple of key points from my point of view is, one, as Jim probably said, in 2002, 2003, we did think comprehensively about a, about a sidewalk program and how that kind of related to overall transportation plan. I think the principal elements of it were, one, complete the town center sidewalk system, which Jim has just talked about. Another important concept was to try to develop sidewalks, or start to develop sidewalks within the various sub-neighborhoods in Guilford, which are identified in the plan. Jim just talked about the area up around Coventry and that little section up there. There are half a dozen others that are identified. And then also, to start thinking about linking these neighborhoods, and also linking the neighborhoods with recreation facilities and/or schools. So, those were the kind of driving concepts behind the plan. I don't know if it actually said this, but sort of implicitly is the idea of completing the town center sidewalk system, that's sort of number-one priority. I think that's, or at least that's implied, that's kind of what we've been doing. And then addressing the other sidewalk needs on an as-needed basis, and as people in those neighborhoods express the desire to do them. So, I think we are, we're proceeding along the lines that the plan suggested in 2003. It never really, I'd never really thought much about the connection over to Madison until the recent issues developed, but quite clearly, in the long-range plan is the desire to extend Boston Street, or extend a sidewalk system from Boston Street and the green all the way to the Madison Line. So, this does dovetail with the Shoreline Greenway Trail concept.
I've gotten a lot of feedback regarding that River Street sidewalk. I mean, you know, all positive, all positive. I mean, that just multiplied the loop, you know, rather than just Whitefield Street circling the green now that it's got that bigger perimeter, because it connects with the rest of River Street down to Route 1. I mean, it just works so well, and there is not a week goes by that I don't get some comments and walkers.
Yeah, I think the idea, people, I mean, I know from my own experience, and people that I see and talk to who live around the center of town, the idea of having a kind of loop or a walk that you can take is very important. It's not, it's not like we, it's not like you go from one place to another and come back. It's nice to have a loop.
And it's not just the people that live there. I mean, people from town, come downtown, make the loop.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I think the point about extending it over, I call it Jones Bridge or Water Street, you know, there is a little, you know, people over at River Colony, Malcourt, and obviously, I live over there, so I notice it all the time. You know, it'd be great to, that's a dangerous bridge, but I, how do you do that? That's a big deal, so. But we're getting there. I think it all makes sense.
I think it's a way to do those things, but, you know, it'd take a little planning, a little design.
Money.
Yeah. Money.
Are you differentiating between sidewalks, which are a 12-month facility, and greenways, which were an eight-month facility?
These, this plan was for basic sidewalks. Yeah. There was talk of pathways that were, I think, identified as alternates to sidewalk that would go actually through, not along roads. They would go, you know, there was talk about in the, in the discussion in the report, if you could create pathways between, save for discussion, Adams and through to high school. I don't even know how that would come up. I don't remember. There was, there was some advocates for that, and they did talk about that. But, and for our purposes, we just, sidewalks is what we're talking about, the center of town in general. But, and what I, you know, identified here on the east side because of the Shoreline Greenway, we did get to, at least get an eight-month, a year facility for people to walk in. And it could be decided at some point in the future that somebody wants to remove that stone. That's not, that's not the, it's not the end of the world.
You mean, remove it?
I mean, remove snow.
Remove snow. That's what I said, stone.
No. That's what I thought you said. Well, I've been known to mumble for a long time.
Yeah. To me, the Shoreline Greenway Trail is an interesting kind of place. It's obviously a catalyst to get us to start thinking about sidewalks and pathways, because if you have an opportunity, have the money, it's provoked a, you know, public conversation about the whole issue. To me, the Shoreline Greenway Trail, the portion of it that we're talking about here is, it creates the incentive, in my opinion, for us, for the town, to make the connection between the end of the Shoreline Greenway Trail and the rest of the Boston Street sidewalk. In that, while you might have bicyclists on the portion of the trail that's 10 feet wide, at the place where the Shoreline Greenway Trail ends, bicyclists go off onto the road as they are now in that vicinity, and pedestrians stay on the conventional sidewalk. So, you basically have a continuation of the same concept of a bicycle and pedestrian facility, but as it gets to, as it crosses Soundview or wherever, it makes the shift from 10 feet to 5, the bicyclists go off to the, go over onto the road, and the pedestrians stay on the sidewalk. And it completes that whole linkage all the way to the green. The sidewalk is deficient, basically, from the point of sort of Alderbrook Cemetery, right around there, it kind of ends on the north side. It'd be nice to continue that all the way up to link to the Greenway Trail. To me, that's a terrific opportunity. The, and the fact that it might not be ideal, having a separate bike path and pedestrian path, you know, that's the kind of reality that we have there in terms of the amount of right-of-way to work with. Seems unlikely that you're going to be able to create a 10-foot-wide integrated path from Soundview to the green along Boston Street. I mean, that would be a major, you know, major change there. But the idea of allowing the bikes to continue to use the road and the pedestrians to be separated makes a, makes a lot of sense to me.
Well, the safety factor, too.
Right.
Like you said, they're going to use it, whether the trail goes in, or sidewalk goes in, or the gutter of the road, or whatever. in or the gutter of the road or whatever. They aren't going to be used, they are being used today.
Yes.
So by making the connection of perhaps not ideal, each section might not be ideal for all of the modes of pedestrian access.
Right.
They certainly are better than the gutter of the road.
And if we build this Shoreline Greenway Trail portion as is being proposed, what does the pedestrian do if they're heading towards the Guilford Green at the end of that trail? You know, they're sort of in a no man's land there. They might very well want to continue to the green, you would think, I mean, that is a destination that people would probably want to walk to. But then they're going to be fighting their way, you know, down this strip of Boston Street, you know, behind the commercial uses there on the north side where there is no sidewalk, then trying to cross Soundview, and then there's no sidewalk on Boston Street's side, so it's going to be somewhat of a frustrating experience for the pedestrians. So to me, you know, it makes a lot of sense. The idea of the eight months versus twelve months, I'm not sure, I have a little bit of experience with this because my son lives on the Farmington Trail up in Haven, and his condominium development sort of backs right up to it, so he uses it all the time. And people use it twelve months of the year, even if there's snow on the ground. If there's a lot of snow, you get people doing cross-country skiing or, and/or snowshoeing. And as around here, you know, you know, joggers and people like that, they don't mind running, you know, in the slush. So that trail, even though no one plows the snow on the Farmington Trail, people use it twelve months of the year for sure.
Let's be very careful when we talk about Boston Street, please. That we're not talking about widening sidewalks to eight to ten feet.
Absolutely, it's not possible.
We're talking about sidewalks.
Right.
Are normal with extending them.
Yes.
And that's all you're talking about.
Right. From that, from the, where they end now at Alderbrook, basically, to wherever the end of the Shoreline Greenway Trail is. People with a conventional sidewalk.
Snippets of this tape, who'll pick up certain words.
I agree, no, that's.
And I think we're talking about Shoreline Trail.
That's the whole concept.
On Boston Street, we're not.
Right.
We're talking about sidewalks.
We do have, we have both pedestrians and bicyclists who are going to be using the Shoreline Greenway portion of this, where it's ten feet wide, where there's enough width for pedestrians and bicyclists to share the same trail. That's the idea, that's the way the Farmington Trail works. Again, I'm very familiar with it. But where that ends, the bicyclists go over to the road, which they're on now, because that is part of that bikeway. The pedestrians go on to the new sidewalk, which is five feet wide, just like every other sidewalk. And connects to the existing five-foot sidewalk at Alderbrook Cemetery or wherever it is that ends there, on the north side.
And there is a bike lane on the road.
There's a bike lane along the road, which is, we're not changing that. People will continue to use that as they do now. The only difference is that they won't be on the same path when they get to that point. They'll have to separate pedestrians on the sidewalk, bicyclists on the road.
As long as you made that clear.
Yes, that's what I envision.
Okay.
I think one of the other major considerations for sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk.
Thank you.
From Alderbrook up to the top of the hill, say Tanner Marsh Road, that's the New England Trail.
That is New England.
And it would be a lot safer for people, I mean, they have to cross Route One anyway, but once they get to the south side of Route One, they'd be on a five-foot-wide sidewalk all the way down to the center of town.
Right.
And then all the way down to the beginning of the trail.
Yeah. Yes, that's, that's, that's great, that's exactly the way I would look.
Jimmy, you want to move on to your height of two?
Can I just ask one more question?
Sorry, Gary.
You've introduced a new term, which is pathway. We've talked about sidewalks, and I know Rick is here. We just got him new equipment so he could, he could plow the sidewalks. So there are obligations there.
We've talked about what a greenway is, what's a pathway? I mean, is that a legal term or is that, or is that just a generic term for a way to go from A to B?
Yeah, that was just a term that was used in this report, sidewalks and pathways. It was just something that wasn't specifically a sidewalk.
So I might just interject. I consulted Jeff and O'Neal on this issue. It's really his position that pathway doesn't kind of, there is no pathway in a legal concept, so your choices are a sidewalk, which has to comply with, you know, several statutes and regulations, state regulations. Or legally, the greenway is, there's a whole statutory framework for the greenways. So the pathway, it was his opinion, if you try to kind of get past the sidewalk requirements by calling something a pathway, that you really can't do that. You can do a greenway, which doesn't have the sidewalk requirements, or you can do a sidewalk.
I think pathways, the term is used in this plan, and it's meant to encompass a wide variety of different types of pedestrian facilities. They're all called pathways. It could be a formal sidewalk paved five feet wide. It could be a less-than-formal sidewalk, like just a gravel trail that goes along the side of the road. Or it could be something more comprehensive like the greenway.
Or even a white trail alongside the road, that's a pathway.
Sure, absolutely. That all falls in that category. One of the things, in some neighborhoods, we've heard comments that the people, the residents would like to have a pedestrian way along the side of the road, for example, but not have it constructed to look like a suburban or urban sidewalk. So that people, there'd actually be a place where people would walk. You know, maybe it's just in the, in the grass or the dirt, but not, and have it, have it, not necessarily designated that way, but used that way, but without the idea of building an actual formal sidewalk.
And there are problems with that. You know, when they built the subdivision up off Podunk, it was, what was that, Nut Plains Road East?
Right.
There was actually a stone dust pathway that was provided off the shoulder, and a number of the people that bought houses on it insisted that it be removed because they, there was no maintenance provision for it. It was just, the stone was getting all over the place, so basically when we finished the road, we just eliminated it. If you're going to have some pathway, unless you're going through the woods and it's going to go along people's property, it should have some formal structure to it so it can be maintained. And that was one of the discussions we had about entering the idea of the greenway along Route One. But I always envisioned the sidewalk on Boston Street being extended as a five-foot walk all the way to, all the way to Route One.
As a sidewalk.
As a sidewalk, and then going easterly. Madison has talked about, now they're talking about their Greenway Trail, but making the connection from the bridge where we're terminating, going towards the Madison Green, so there would be a pedestrian way along Route One to connect the two greens. To me, that's the ideal situation. I don't, you know, the other pieces may, would, you know, may, may never ever be done, but it would be, I think, terrific to have that pedestrian access or even bicycle access between the two greens. My grandkids have done that crop walk a number of times along Route One from, I think it's the Madison Green to the Guilford Green.
And they use Boston Street.
And they use, they used Route One and they use Boston Street. It's, you know, hey, it's maybe one or two times a year, but those, it'd be nice to have that safe way to go.
What's the Western Urban Association proposed Shoreline Greenway Trail? The current project? Where's the, and?
Right at, right at Tanner Marsh, basically, the water tower.
Oh, Tanner Marsh.
Yeah.
So it goes across, in front of the motel?
Yes. Just one more property.
But. Turns down, it pins a little bit.
A little bit, but not very much.
And it's on the south side there, obviously.
It's on the south side.
pedestrians would have to cross, there'd have to be a crosswalk to the north side. Sidewalk would extend along the north side of Boston Street? Or you bring the sidewalk on the south side?
No, I would, I think because of the ease of just extension, so you wouldn't have to make crossings, I would continue it along that north side behind those commercial properties. They, I mean, they're not, you won't be in by a front yard.
So you cross the street there?
Yeah.
At the Y intersection?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hang on, six dot one, we want to move on to six dot two.
Joe, can I just ask one more question while we're exchanging? What is your capacity, we're talking about extending sidewalks or, you plow the sidewalks. What is your capacity to do more? Can you do more with existing staff, existing equipment? Ten percent, fifty percent more, or are you tapped out?
Well, we do bring in seasonal guys to help us in the winter. A lot of depends who's available when you get seasonal guys. We usually have two or three guys. We also do all the town parking lots, you know, town hall, community center, library, places like that. Once we're done with the parking lots, we just keep one guy to maintain the parking lots, depending if it's still snowing, keep going through them. And then two guys usually go out and help public works. So we have two trucks that go out on the road, so they're, they're there with public works the rest of the storm. The seasonal guys and one or two or three of our full-time guys do the sidewalks. So, you know, I mean, it's, yeah, can we do it, but it just may take a while to get, if we're adding another mile, two miles of sidewalks, it'll just take some time to get to it, you know. The priority's always the town buildings, you know, police department first, we have to get their sidewalk first, their shift change, I think, is six in the morning, so that's always first. And then usually the community center is next because we have people coming in at seven in the morning, assuming school's not closed, you know. And then town hall, and then library, that's that order, and then the green, and then we go up over the bridge, Woodfield Street, all the way down, you know, to the marina. So that's kind of the priority order. I mean, this would be lower on the priority, I would think, because it's not, you know, it's heavily used, it wouldn't be as the other sidewalks that we maintain right now.
Just got a brand-new machine.
Yeah.
But if you're talking about snow removal, the priorities are always the roads and facilities. Even on the road, the sidewalk one, it gives people a certain amount of time to clear the sidewalks.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. I mean, so it's not like it has to be done right away, and if there's a, if the decision is to do that, you know, it's not a priority in the sense that you don't have to get them open for the bugs, run over anything else like that.
Okay, let's move on.
All right, while we're on the same kind of subject, there is a new Federal Transportation Funding Act, provided money for creating alternates to roadway improvements. It's the Connecticut, and it funds the Connecticut Surface Transportation Block Grant Program as transportation alternatives. There's a minimum size project of half a million dollars. It seems to dovetail very nicely with some of the discussions we've had on State Street and also the people up at North Madison Road, Coventry. They want ways to get to the schools. So what I've done, and I've talked about this once before, having this, and I've changed the title of the plan to call it a path, so we didn't get it confused with the Greenway Trail. It could, and Pam discussed the idea that there were two standards under which it could build either sidewalk or a greenway. But for the intent of submitting this application for funding, we just called it a path. And it was, it's to connect the Adams School on the south to the, up State Street, up Nut Plains Road, to North Madison Road, over to Guilford Lakes School, which would also mean the municipal golf course, Timberland Preserve. As you go along that way, you would pass the Nut Plains Road Dog Park, Nut Plains. So it was a long path that would, I think, have great deal of utility for all the people who utilize or want to move in the center of the town without getting in their car. We've had not only the people from Nut Plains Road West and Tupelo and Golden Hill who have requested, but I've had a number of people north of there on Nut Plains have also asked about extension of a sidewalk or a pathway up there. So it would seem to be meeting all those needs as well as provide for the people up north at Coventry, as well as being consistent with our plan, a transportation plan. Put the, getting to put the application together, we have to have it in by the end of October. If it's the board of selectors will, then we can proceed with it. As I said, it's a half million dollars here. Looking at it, it's quite an extensive run. We would, we would put together the application, the preliminary design at least, and a cost estimate that I would attach to the application I've prepared to date. And if you're concerned for approval, I would submit it to SCROG and see if we can get funding for it.
Yeah, Jim and I both sit on the Transportation Committee up at CAG, Jim on the technical side, myself on the CEO side. And they're looking for programs, the money's available. This is how towns or cities like New Haven get their money to put in their bike lanes. If you've been in New Haven lately, you'll see a lot of green painted streets or lanes. This is how they get their money. And this is, I think, an excellent use of transportation money for Guilford. People have been here before this board, looking to put these pathways in. And I would wholeheartedly support a resolution by this board applying for this grant.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Jim, you haven't done the costs, so you're going to do it. You get about three and a half miles of pathway, which, using the only comparable that we have, is about eight hundred thousand for seven tenths of a mile. I mean, is this a three to four mile, four million dollar project?
You know, I would, to put a guess on it right now, it would be, it wouldn't be accurate. One of the things that will go concurrently with this development plan business, we're also putting together a LOTZIP application for reconstruction of Nut Plains Road. LOTZIP was the same program under which we built Westlake Avenue. So we're putting that together, we have to have that in November. As one or the other, we could do a lot of the prep work for this pathway, whatever we call it. I don't expect it to be a ten-foot-wide path. I see it more in the range of a, maybe a six-foot sidewalk. There's no defined cross-section that we would have to have. I would just, I wanted to make it be compatible for both pedestrians and bicyclists.
And we did get an appropriation from the last resolution, final resolution.
Right.
So I can't remember the amount.
It was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It would pay our twenty percent.
Yeah.
So I was looking more to five to six hundred thousand, a narrower, more conventional kind of pathway.
Joe, you lost me on that one. The hundred and fifteen is for what?
For the State Street sidewalk.
Okay.
It was approved in twenty fifteen, April twenty fifteen.
So we have money that goes to, we have a twenty percent local match that's required.
How do you answer the public support or opposition that's been voiced to date? The State Street project had a substantial portion of both.
Yeah, and their biggest concern is expressed to me at the end was the, the people wanted to get out from under the obligation, remove the snow, and to remove any liability they would have if somebody fell on this path. I think Pam could talk about the legality, is if we, if we could define this as a greenway, then we don't come under the sidewalk ordinances. So there is no obligation to remove snow, and the liability is like any other liability. It's in town parks or anything else. It's basically, that's kind of facilities.
See, the statute, the sidewalk under common law, it is, it was always the municipalities' obligations for sidewalks and streets to remove and maintain, to remove snow and maintain. Then in the early eighties, there was a statute that was passed, which allowed municipalities to shift that obligation to remove snow and ice to the adjoining homeowner for a sidewalk only. And you were able to do that by adopting an ordinance. So we, as, you know, maybe all other, most other towns did that. And that's where we are today, where the adjoining property owner has that obligation. But it only... But it only applies to sidewalks. If it's a greenway, which again, not to confuse the Greenway Trail and that organization, if it's a greenway as defined in the statutes, that whole obligation does not exist for adjoining property owners. So if I were a property owner, you know, I probably wanted a greenway in front of my house. But, you know, that's kind of the way to look at it.
But if you were the groups that advocated it, they advocated it because they wanted their kids to be able to walk to Adams and to Guilford Lakes, which would imply that it would be
Twelve months a year.
Twelve months a year cleared because the time that they would be walking to the schools would be the time that you needed to clear.
Yeah, they'll have to figure that out.
I can't imagine they'd be excited about, you know, sending their kids on slushy, snowy roads down.
Well, that'll have to be
That's a trade-off.
I always liked the old story, because he's old like me. We walked uphill.
Both ways.
In three years.
Nobody said a thing.
It was safer than traffic.
Yeah, that's right. We all had galoshes, you'd put them on. You walked everywhere, right?
Different times.
Well, this is the new, this is the change of that times. We're going back. If you want to walk on a greenway, you get your galoshes on.
And this is not to be confused.
No, that's why, that's why I avoided the term.
Small G greenway.
It's not to be confused with the private greenway trail, okay? Thank you. Any further discussion?
I think of the line from Moonstruck, "I'm so confused."
It's one of my favorite movies. Back to the old days. All those in favor?
I'm, no. I'm against at this point. There's not enough information.
Nothing for the grant. Three in favor, one opposed. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All righty, seven appointments and resignations. I have seven dot one. Act on a resignation received from Robert Manetti from the pension committee. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. With regret. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bob has been an excellent member. Act on a resignation from Robert Levine from the Economic Development Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Remove from the table and take possible action on the resignation received from David Burke Holder from the Marina Commission. First of all, I need a motion to remove from the table.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need a motion to accept a resignation from David Burke Holder from the Marina Commission.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, eight, one.
Joe, can I just make one comment on seven, three?
Sure.
Because we tabled it. This was a gentleman who, I think, was ill-served by the nominating process. And it was tracked down by the DTC, and they talked to him again. And I just, we're always encouraging people, it doesn't happen very often, but occasionally in all volunteer organizations like DTC and RTCs and whatever, something falls through the cracks. And his process fell through the cracks, and it's unfortunate. And he just had a bad feeling about it, but we still encourage people to volunteer. It doesn't happen very often.
Once in a while, yeah, it happens. Eight, request for the use of town properties, and we had an addition on this one. It's eight, one and eight, two.
I would move that we approve the use by the Shoreline Arts Alliance and the sign by the Keeping Society as amended and added to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, carries. Under number nine, correspondence, building officials' monthly report in the public works department, monthly report. And I already gave you a copy of the French Radiance's report. Did I have something else on that? I think that was it. Okay. Also, you have in your packet a letter from Philip Maltese regarding the greenway trails and a letter from Ty Seukim announcing their change of name. And there was
A letter from Maltese, Joe, was regarding the golf course.
I'm sorry, the golf course. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. In expressing his, he compliments the golf course and what a great asset it is to the town and the management of the golf course. And we thank him for that. And also Ty Seukim, as mentioned, and the Breaking AIDS Ride. He had a very nice letter that the town was very helpful in helping them with their ride through Guilford. So that's all for your reading company. And we thank him for those letters. Okay, committee reports.
Can I just
Just call.
Give a little public information report?
Sure.
Last week, we had a lot of dead fish in the West River. As the selectman's office knows, because people called, and I took some pictures of it. This happens every so many years. As a matter of fact, the West River was known by the Indians as Manungatuck, meaning Men Hayden River. Men Hayden being the more formal name for bunker fish. When the bluefish are in a feeding frenzy, they sometimes chase the bunkers up the rivers. And anytime between mid-tide and low tide, when the fish, hundreds of thousands of these fish get up as far as where J.J. Sullivan's is or whatever, the water is so shallow that the hundreds of thousands of fish use up all the oxygen, and they go belly up. The natives love that because they go down with their baskets and collect all the dead fish and use them for fertilizer in their cornfields. But there was no disease or any danger. It's just something that happens in nature every so often. I think it happened in the East River, I don't know, sometime 2000, I think, or something like that. So anyway, people don't have to worry about disease, except for the dead fish. They shouldn't let their kids be playing with dead fish, which I guess happened at one point.
Only take once.
But anyway.
Well, thank you, Paul. I learned something today. Just, I would like to add something to that, not to the fish. Another incident we had between this meeting and the last meeting, there was a police activity in the town of Madison, which our police were involved with what we call mutual aid. And I was in contact with our police chief. We had several calls up at the selectman's office, and a couple of people were starting to get concerned, a couple of our citizens, that we hadn't issued a either reverse 911 or the emergency service calls, which some of our residents, I wish more would sign up for that, too. If you want to sign up, contact the selectman's office about why we haven't alerted our citizens. We didn't alert our citizens because no one in Guilford was in danger. And believe me, if any of our citizens were in danger, we would have been notified to shelter in place and be in lockdown. The schools weren't in danger, the residents weren't in danger. And I was in contact with our police department. So to the citizens who called the selectman's office in a bit of a panic, we handled those calls. And again, if there was a danger to the town, we would have been on it. The police chief would have called me and instructed us what to do and to alert the citizens. I want to let you know that we have a very fine police and fire department, and they're on top of every situation. So that's why you weren't notified, to the people who thought you should have been notified. I know news media has a tendency to hype everything up. So if there's ever a concern, yes, you can call us anytime you want, but please don't panic, okay? Our police department is one of the finest in the state. Gary, you have something to say?
Yeah. Yeah. For those that aren't aware, and everybody should be aware, the deer management process started this morning on the East River Preserve. It is open for bow hunting from stands fifteen feet in the air away, and it's monitored so they are not near pathways, but there are, I think, it ended up with seventeen licensees who are allowed to be on the property from 4:30 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. It's monitored to make sure that they're out of there by 11:30 a.m. So if one wants to be extra careful, stay out of there, and it's available for hiking or whatever you want to do after 11:30. It's only on weekdays for the next four weeks, Monday through Friday, and no holidays. And I guess there's a, Veterans Day is in
It's a school day.
Is a school day.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be over. It's posted. Unfortunately, there are people who have vandalized the signs that the Natural Resources Department has put up, which only endangers people that might not be aware of what's going on. So we would ask that to stop. The process is well-monitored. It has been vetted by DEEP. It will be, they will be monitored by DEEP officers, and it's copied on the program that the water company has used successfully for a number of years without incident, although much more restrictive actually in terms of the time that it's used. So everybody should be aware that there can be hunting on that, on the property, and take precautions if you are on the property. Wear orange, wear red, and be aware of the timing.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, any other announcements? We do have on a new business, twelve dot one, a proclamation in front of you. I'd like to have a motion to approve it so we can all sign it.
I would move that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Motion's made. Second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, public floor. Anybody wishing to address the board? I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, we have a public hearing on November first, 7:30 in the community center.
Is Ed Opie in pension, Republican or Democrat?
A Republican. She's a Democrat, yeah. Do we adjourn?